Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 4th Board of Education Board of Education meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll over the proceeds while my fellow board members are present this evening. We're going to go on a board discussion. Does anyone have anything? Okay, then we move on to public comment and opportunity.
Oh, the science fair.
Oh, good.
I can't, my time, my, my skew of time is off, but the science fair at the elementary school was amazing. Had the highest number of attendees or of projects and I think that students since forever that they have recorded data and the projects were phenomenal. It was seeing these scientist minds at such a young age. It made me really excited for what's going to happen when they continue to grow. And it was, some of those projects were things that I was flower gasted by. And all of them were the things that I was impressed in. So from kindergarten through fifth grade.
Thanks for bringing that up. I saw a good picture, sir.
And kudos to the organizers, sir.
Yes, you're really well on. Okay, opportunity for students. We have no students this evening. Opportunity for the public to be heard. If anybody would like to make comments, please come up here and state your name and your three minutes.
I won't say three minutes.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Jessica Ambul. I just wanted to, the last couple of board meetings, I saw that you're getting a new reading curriculum. And it was stated that, you know, they'll have, teachers will have a lot of time to learn the curriculum and get professional development on that. I just really like to encourage that an appropriate amount of time be given to really digest and learn a new curriculum. I know it takes a lot of hours for teachers to go through a curriculum and to learn it as best they can so they can then teach a classroom full of children. And just looking at the schedule, I know that in the beginning of the school year, setting up their classroom takes a long time, getting the kids, getting all these things ready. You have some half days, but those are really for conferences. And so I just encourage you to look at that and make sure that the teachers do have the correct amount of time or enough time to really explore the curriculum, learn it, get maybe people from wherever you're getting the curriculum to come into the classroom and to do a training as they're teaching that I think would be helpful as well. That's okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Then we shall move on to budget presentation.
Okay. So we're going to get right into it. Not much has changed and Jim's got it up there. As you know, the state has not adopted a new budget yet. But all the things on education are pretty much set to be there. There's no conversations about anything really changing. I know the education bills are any of the state runs. We're anticipating that all to be pretty much as it is. And so, you know, as we've been discussing already, pretty much as we have been. So Jim, I'm going to leave it off to you.
Okay. So first of all, the import of budget base. Of course, tonight, we're asking for approval of the budget. April 18 is the deadline for Board of Education positions. The 19, that's the debt balance demand. Twenty five, there's a deadline for more approval of the post-budget if you're handling that tonight. So that will be, may ninth, we have our budget hearing. Has to be between seven and fourteen days before the actual vote. The vote will be on May 17. That's the general timeline going forward. Revenue factors. The state aid makes up about almost 26% of the projected budget based on the executive funds. Tax levy makes up a little over 70%. That's down a little bit from prior years because of course state aid is up, that pretty much offsets. Our tax levy increase is using a 2.5%, which is below the 4.16 tax cap allowed. Other revenue is a tiny 1.38%. Federal revenue is 3%, which is one seventh of 1% this current, this upcoming year. And allocated fund balance, which is our wiggle room essentially of two and a half percent. Current gap is zero, as we said before. The executive budget, as we mentioned, the total has 7.4 million in it, proposedly for us. Current year, we budgeted 6.1. Projected actual is 6.5. Which we talked about reserves and fund balances earlier in the opportunity. Our projected state aid for next year is 7.265, 24.5. We made a slight adjustment to the governor's numbers based on historical, how things don't enjoy life and transportation and places. Tax levy is part of the tax cap calculation. It's allowed to be a maximum of 2%. It is actually 4.7% for the most recent reporting period that ever lasted. That difference would allow us to tax $520,000. Is not a good measure anyway, but as you can see, it's over 2% they allow us. As we filed it, again, 4.16%, all the different processes that go through to get to that number. The proposed budget is a 2.5% tax levy increase. With our property value growths, we believe the actual tax rate will be less than 1% increase. The increases have been anywhere from 1.6 to 1.8%. So if you take that off the 2.5, it's less than 1. Other revenue is just minimal amounts. It comes from donations and refund of prior years and things like that. That total all of 300 tons of dollars every year. Not very easy. Now, interest may become something more important in future years as the Fed starts raising rates. We'll have to talk about that a little more properly next year. Federal revenue is only Medicaid in this upcoming budget. Last year, we included the S R funds, which we shouldn't have done. We do have A R P aid that is $282,000. That has been accounted for and will be accounted for in the F Fund and is not included in this budget. Okay, so what we do to come up with our budget? We start with the roll over budget and we add items for adjusting. Services and items that we've added and adjusted. Maintenance contracts for the telephone system. We put that in place this year and there have been a few issues. So we want to make sure that we can maintain it properly and not have to spend a great amount of money. Maintenance projects at all facilities, including security, fields and athletic maintenance. That's $325,000 this upcoming year that we've funded.
So Jim, go ahead.
Plus a hundred thousand dollar capital outlay.
So that is also the, you know, the tennis courts and the track is a big portion of that. You know, as I joke about the tennis courts, it looks like San Andreas Fault has gone through it. But, you know, it's to get the tennis courts and track is a large portion of what that funds are to come out of.
So the new reading program at the elementary school and the training for that program. BOC services, including installment purchases. What we're doing with the installment purchases, as we discussed before, is upgrading our old technology, you know, laptops, desktops, and stuff like that. Putting display devices in every instructional space. We are replacing all the copiers that haven't been replaced this year. We are also wanting to upgrade our larger performance spaces so that they can be used as multimedia spaces, the pack and the large gym at the elementary. Those items, just to make sure that we can actually make full use of the facilities that we have.
So the pack in elementary school, instead of doing this thing that we have here with the little projector and then we have the little speakers, is actually a mounted long throw projection screen that you then can input either in the front of the projector, in front of the auditorium or in the back. And it then is hooked up to the speaker. So it creates an atmosphere that actually is conducive to like large, large lecture lectures, different types of performances. It just gives more ability to those areas.
And another factor is bringing us to the point where we can implement one-on-one by adding proposals. So that's all part of this installment purchase.
So this technology upgrade brings us to where other districts are comparable to and puts us where we need to be with our technology. It updates all of the old technology that we have. It puts us in a good place for the next five to 10 years afterwards. And it really sets us up for the future to be able to move forward.
And the nice thing about an installment purchase, you pay for it over five years. Then you have that money in the budget already when you're redoing everything. So then we'll never fall behind again because we don't have refunds. Replace full-time equipment, that's an item that needs to be done that was mentioned in our job condition.
And that's split with Gilde's List as well. Any questions up until this point? I know that we went through this a few times, but before we get into anything else.
So the track and the tennis courts, is that just resurfacing or is it?
So where, so the track is resurfacing. And that's roughly anywhere between 125 and 150 are the quotes that we're coming in on that. The tennis courts, on the other hand, are a little bit more in depth of like pulling up and redoing. And that's anywhere between 100 to 220. We've seen different quotes, quotes right now, so we're still building quotes for that. But it's, it's not surface level fixing on those. It's really getting down, redoing the posts. It's getting the tennis court back to a usable place for a long-term future.
Question about federal revenue. Have we always been that limited in how much we've gotten from the feds?
Generally, yes. It's because it's based on the title grants allocations. And ours are very limited to begin with. So whenever they're going to expand that pool of money, our portion is limited by that factor.
Or any indication that that's not going to change in terms of?
Unlikely.
Any other questions up until that point?
Did the F Fund stand for federal?
Well, technically, under the general account, I believe that's what.
Convenient.
It, it's called the grant spot, so. Nothing changes.
I'll take this one. So at the elementary school, as we see our increasing class sizes, this is to offset an enrollment that we're seeing at the elementary school. If the kindergarten does not tap out like we're thinking it's going to cap out, we're going to use this to offset other classroom sizes. So this teacher's going to be there to offset class sizes no matter what. But, you know, we were anticipating kindergarten enrollment to be higher. Right now, our kindergarten enrollment is not where our projection was, but we are seeing other classes. So we would offset that use. We're also having a teaching assistant added to the elementary school as well. And then a .6 business math position that will offset the, the class enrollment increases for the sixth grade and be able to give our curriculum, to give more curriculum in our STEM programs for sixth and seventh graders, along with overflow and C E I P courses to the high school courses. So, yes.
Business math?
Business.
Okay.
Did I say math?
Yeah, you said business math.
Oh, my bad. So, no. Not business.
And by business, you mean like the, the tech course that Ms. Worley put together?
Yes, so that's STEM courses, like computer sciences.
Every time you say business, I keep thinking of.
And then it's a .4A that we already have in the budget. So we're just combining the two of them.
You don't have this additional kindergarten requirement of need. This person is going to float between different.
No, this person will take down the grade level based off of the numbers. So if we have like 26 students, we're going to then lower that.
So you're selecting a kind of a balloon or a laser someplace?
Yep.
Thanks for the bunch of changes. We already went through most of these as far as what the actual pieces are and what they might have been. Any questions on that? I'm happy to go through all the details on installment purchases are down below, but that's what's. But we already talked about it, so.
Can I ask a quick question, probably for Frank? Last year, we added a social worker?
Yep.
And this budget keeps that level?
This, we added actually two things last, we added a few things over the past few years. We added an A I S, additional A I S teacher in the elementary school and a social worker. Both of those are staying. And we also added, I believe, the year before, I'm going to say next year, we added another elementary school classroom as well. So all of those additions that we, we had over the years, we're still building upon those additions and then adding more layers to that as well.
So employee benefits, the E R S rate is going down. E R S rate is going up. Workers' pound is up slightly. Health insurance overall is relatively flat between all that we have. Not huge changes in any direction with that one for this year. Net service, we do have our new payment for the phase one, phase two borrowing that we did finally. We had been on bands, now we're on bonds, so we have to make payments every year. The differential, including capital tax levy exclusion, which is part of the tax cap calculation, is 85,534. About 65 of that is local, 20 of that is BOCs we added in their piece. Summary is expenses of 28,164,661. Revenues are the same. Revenues assume a below tax cap increase of $408,000. Increase state aid because they're bringing the foundation up to where it's supposed to be. And allocated fund balance, projected gap is zero, as we've said all along. Any questions?
Thank you for, both of you, for keeping us updated and starting early with this. So it's never surprised much, I think, rating increase. Okay. Moving on, superintendent's report.
Superintendent, please. So I get to go. I'm going to add the one thing that I didn't have in here because this came up today. I spoke to the village and I spoke to the mayor and we are having a conversation about a potential crossing guard at the elementary school. So we've, we've been, well, a bit more than, it's, we're, we're starting the conversations. And with that being said, is, you know, we're seeing a lot more students coming in and they're riding their bikes, they're walking, which is fantastic. But we also want to make sure that there's a safeguard. That is something that the village has to work with us on as a town guard. And now it all comes down to, and we also have to work with Department of Transportation's, that's the state road. So there's a lot that goes into it. And then we also have to figure out who's going to pay for it. That, you know, that is the other major component of anything that works. You know, you know, I do not believe that the village will, will foot the bill for this. You know, and I don't, I think there's going to be conversations about how we can share this service and what can be done and maybe if there's grants. But I wanted to let you know that this is definitely something we're looking into. I don't know if the board feels about this. I feel strongly that, I think if it can be done, it should be done. You know, you know, it's a little bit time.
I, I suggest, like, you know how in Bethlehem on the main strip, they have, you press the button and it flashes?
Yeah.
You can't miss it.
No.
I, I, because that would be their 24 hours.
Right, and that's Department of Transportation would have to install something like that.
Yeah.
So anything, I think, would be better than what we currently have.
Absolutely.
And I know that the village is, you know, I know the mayor is actually speaking tonight to his board. And I think, you know, we're going to start having a conversation about how we can work together on solving that issue.
Yay.
So that's something that came up today, kind of, sure. I know, right? Long time coming, so let's see what happens and maybe a year from now. What's that?
Like a hundred years coming.
Yeah, so hopefully we'll see what happens. But, and I have to thank Mr. Vivendio because he's been on me about it as well. So we bring this conversation up, so I can't take credit that it was my idea. Although I will, but it was actually Mr. Vivendio's idea. So U P K, as you know, the state has put it back in the budget. And we have our agreement with Serendipity. They are willing again to continue our partnership. So we are now publicizing that. We have 18 slots as we did last year. There was a little confusion, I just want to clarify it. We did get enough funding for 27 slots last year, but due to the fact of what, what Serendipity can uphold and do, they only could do 18 slots. And that's kind of normal. Some districts might get the funding for 40, but they could only fill 24. It really is dependent on your C B O and what your C B O can handle. C B O is a community-based organization. So we have 18 slots, then it will be lottery that is out now. So we're, we're getting that going and our plan is to have the lottery poll in May. So, and we're off and running.
Televise.
I'm going to do exactly what I did last time. I'm going to record it and coffee cup it up and go out that way, so.
That was a hot Nielsen rating.
Yeah, I got a lot of people watching it that day. A little nerve wracking. So, and then the last one is a shared decision-making plan. We have a district advisory group made up of teachers and non-instructional staff, administrators, and there's parents also that are on this. And we've been working on revamping our shared decision-making plan for almost two years now. The first one was done in 1990 or 98 was the first time that it was looked at. And I don't think it really has been reviewed since. The, the new plan itself actually incorporates the old plan. So it still has the site base management teams that are there. But what it does is it keeps, doeses the foundation, but then adds building leadership teams within the building. On top of that, we'll meet monthly. And it also gives a framework to how the hierarchy of like workflow will go. So if you have a district advisory group, which the district has not had before, which is a whole group, then you have building levels. And then you have like your technology committee, you have your equity committees, you have all these different groups. And then you can actually point to where information will go and who's going to work on what. So nothing actually stays stagnant. And there can be work getting done and there's a lot of voice now that can be heard in it. I know the group is actually pretty excited to work. I mean, it was a lot of work that went into that and thank you to, you know, there's a couple of people here right now. Like the day will tell you, there was a lot of work. And it was all staff members and people putting their time and input into it. And we're really excited about being able to do this. I mean, it will be a living document that we utilize and evaluate yearly to see how it works and see how we can tweak it. But as you know, since we've gotten here, we've really tried, you know, and that's one thing we focus in on as our goals is communication and clarity of our communication. And having a well-written shared decision-making plan and a well-functioning committee shared decision-making plan really helps with that communication and be able to move forward. So, and, you know, our B L Ts have been working diligently right now on our reading programs, on other things that are going on. It's, it's got voice, so this is a program that is working and we're excited to see it move forward. Any questions on the shared decision-making plan?
Is there, is there something on the agenda for us to approve?
It is, it's 5.5. It is attached to 5.5.
No, I looked at it. I read through it.
18 minutes.
Frank, is there, are you kind of the person who, I'll say, monitors the use of the shared decision-making team?
So, yeah, I guess. Yeah, so I guess.
I'm not quite sure who decides this goes here, this goes.
So that's actually the D A C. So the district advisory committee actually is the ones that kind of look at where things go. And then the building level teams also are saying, okay, well, this is a building level. No, this has to go here.
Okay.
Now, does this impact more than just our building? All right, well, guess what? If it only, if it only impacts elementary, then yeah, we'll keep it at the elementary school. But if this impacts elementary, middle school and high school, well, maybe that needs to go to the district advisory committee. Or if it's technology-based, well, instead of being housed here, that should go to the tech.
Well, that's kind of what I'm getting at. It seemed like there needs to be a level of kind of uniform thinking.
Yep.
Kind of a traffic cop, just to think, you know, this goes over here.
Well, that's where administrative hierarchy kind of comes in because there's an administrative arm in each. And then I, we kind of talk about that.
Yeah.
And then we talk about it at the D A C as well. Our last meeting at the district advisory committee, we said, what goes here and what should go other places? So, and again, this is new for us. So if it doesn't work the first six months, we'll go back and we'll say, all right, wait, this isn't working. How do we fix it? And we change it up.
So is the shared decision-making plan required for Stephen?
Yes.
So that's why we're voting.
That's why you're voting now. And it's also in your board house. But this one has just not been reviewed or adapted for about.
Yeah, there's a reference in there to some, some requirement, Stephen, so I assumed yes.
Any other questions on it? Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you. A board discussion exit survey for election.
Let me start on that one too. All right, so, excuse me. I mentioned to the board that there is an ability to do an exit survey for your voters. A lot of school districts do these where you do a exit survey to anyone who is taking your, who's voted. And you ask them to either do an electronic survey or a written survey. And, you know, some of the topics kind of go voter demographics, how and why people voted the way they did. Voter politics, so you really get to have an understanding of what guides or voter profiles. So you have an understanding of who's voting for your vote and who comes out. And then if you do this yearly, you have a better understanding of your kind of overall makeup of your voters. And then it's also the information about how it was about the proposal, so how it was communicated. So we can find out, you know, how did your voters learn about it? Did they learn through Facebook? Did they learn from our newsletters? Did it was word of mouth? Was it our budget presentations? You know, having an understanding of how those things came up and how they happened. A lot of districts do these, they find them pretty interesting. It's about 10 to 15 questions that you can utilize or is a place that you can actually have some feedback on, some responses as well. And, you know, you can just get an understanding of the demographic of the votes, who's, who's coming up to vote. To do this, it would be no cost to us. It's part of our powers that we have with our communication specialists. They do offer it within the district and, you know, it is an easy lift that we can do.
So how would we have people take the survey?
We would set up a station and they would be able to do it either by paper and/or by electronic touch stations with laptops.
Radio through the vote?
Yeah, radio through the vote. So you ask people, you say, would you like to take the survey? They say no, and then they leave. Or yes, I wouldn't mind taking the exit survey. And then they take it.
Beyond demographics and knowing if they voted or didn't vote, do we have a specific goal from this? Like, I know we're talking around a capital project regarding elementary school, potentially. I'm not saying anything is written still. But is there a goal towards understanding how our voters' tendencies? Or is this just a general knowledge base?
Depends on what you would like to do with that information. I know my own personal feeling on it, but I don't know what the board would like to do with that.
And also, my other question is, if this is a part of the hours that we have for communications and they're doing this, it's hours that they could be spending doing maybe that, who knows what that is, right? Because it's a finite number of hours.
I have 70 hours available and this is about 20.
Right, but I'm just saying, maybe there's something else that could come up that would be those 20. So if we do this for 20 hours, then we're not doing something else for 20 hours, right?
Sure.
Okay. So it does cost something. It might be at the cost.
There's no monetary value that we'd have to spend out to do.
Right.
It's already something.
It's already spent, but it's at the cost of potentially not doing something else that we don't know what it would be. That's, that's my thought. So, but, and what is, the other thought is, what is it that we want to learn? And would we be doing this every year if, if that's?
So I'm bringing this to the board, so, you know, it's really up to you as to what you'd like to do with it.
I like the idea. I think getting input from a group of people who have taken the time to go vote and are willing to take additional time to offer some thoughts about why they voted the way they did and what they hope for and such, whatever it is we ask. I think that's a very important group of people for us to listen to. And this is a listening opportunity. I participated in exit surveys back in the 1970s. So this is not a new thing. And this is something that I think we should be definitely doing regularly. I think let's try it, see if it's worthwhile. If we like what we see, great. We don't, okay, it was a good idea, but it didn't work out.
I'm strongly in favor of it. I mean, right now, we can guess, but we, we don't know anything about who votes, right? We don't, we don't know anything about what our voter base looks like in terms of to vote for the budget. We don't know anything about the types of people who are voting, you know, no versus yes, right? Like, who are those people and what, what do they care about, what demographic would they vote? That sort of data in a one-off year, still good to have. But especially if we keep doing this year after year, we can understand what changes in that demographic base. What do we need to do to bring people around to yes for that sort of up and down vote on the budget? You know, and then yes, coming into a, you know, a capital project or five, 10 years down the road, another capital project, right? Like, how can we better understand who we need to be communicating to, to, you know, get their buying? So, but that's my two cents.
And I think it will also show who's not voting because we get, still get such a small percentage about the community. It's, it's such a small percentage. But it, to give you an idea, is that just one group of people? And then where out in the community should we be to raise the number of people that actually come?
What portion, I, I think you're saying, what portion of our citizens should, are we not communicating with?
Communication should be working on to get more people to come and vote.
That makes sense.
I recognize that there is at least a potential for us to over-rely on this information. You know, we have 27 people participating. You know, we have twenty-seven people participate and we think, you know, that's a mandate from the people, and it's not. So we have to be careful as to make sure that we put this in perspective.
And what's also interesting is the fluctuation in the voting numbers. When we have a more contested election or whatever, sometimes the, the voting numbers will triple. And when we're looking at, you know, it looked like around twenty to twenty-five percent of voters participated in the surveys on the reports of other districts. So if we're having a quarter of the voters participate, if, if, let's say hypothetically, this was an uncontested election, we're getting maybe a hundred, a hundred and fifty of the citizens of the district, the voting citizens versus that. And, and that to me is, it's just, it's a curious body of information. And what we do with it becomes more curious, especially in some ways if it's one point on a line. The other question is, the questions that are going to be framed, who, you know, would we be like asking, giving input? Or, or is this going to just be something that is developed by the council?
No, it's, it's, so this is something you guys can totally have input on. I gave you generic questions and samples that other boards have used. It really comes down to, would you really want to focus on? What does, you know, what does the end goal? I know for me, we, I've never seen one here. So I really kind of want to know. I have an idea of who votes, but I really have no idea who's coming out to vote. And I had really no idea if what I'm, what I'm sharing is actually getting out to people, right? I don't, I mean, it might be going out to my neighbor because I'm having a conversation with them. But other than that, I don't know, you know, he doesn't have kids in the district, you know, he might not be getting that information. So I'd really like to better understand how we can serve our community and be more transparent and share these ideas. And for me, this is kind of where I was like, well, I've seen these before. I've used these before. I haven't seen one here. It might be beneficial, but at least it won't. But I gave you samples. I mean, you don't want to go too crazy in some of the things. But I can have them work out once. You can get ones from, I'm sure NISBA has sample templates.
I didn't see any questions on the samples you gave us that I found objection.
Yeah. They're pretty much straightforward ones.
Very straightforward.
Yeah, I'd be careful of getting too, I, I didn't see any, but that they would go into politics versus the general information.
I have some sampling to you. I voted no on the proposed budget because I didn't agree. The project tax increase was unreasonable. It will not benefit my child. I want support. Can't afford it. Other, you know, do you believe the cuts made in the proposed budget were too much? Reasonable, not enough. How have you typically voted on the school budget in the past? And then, you know, my vote varies. I've not voted in the past. So we get to know if there's new voters, you know. So there's a lot that goes into these. They just give us an understanding.
Interesting. Thank you.
So if the board wants, I can kind of draft it up.
I was gonna say, using those.
Yeah. If you guys think, can just, yeah, if this sounds good.
I'm interested in seeing it.
Draft it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Okay. Two full minutes. We have a motion to approve the last one's minutes. Regular meeting? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So let's group five point one through five point six as pressure to report personnel items where we have two, two retirements. Um, we are Yingling, teacher age twenty-four years of service. Margaret McQuaid with ten years of service. Thank you. Thank you then. Okay. Five point three, CSC recommendations. Five point four, BOSI sub list. Five point five, approval district plans and shared decision-making that we, that Frank just spoke to us about. And five point six, approved contract with Scottlin Soppers. Any questions from anyone? And they have a motion?
Voting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. So moving on, old business. Um, RG Chair, what did you give us? From re please?
Sure. Thanks, Cindy. So we met earlier this evening, um, starting at six o'clock. We reviewed the claims audit reports, rolling two exceptions, um, for a total of eighty dollars, which is great news. We talked through the funds balances as well as reserves, some of which Jim went through in the budget presentation. We did talk about a five hundred thousand dollar reserve for capital projects, and that's a fund that we set up years ago and will continue to build on until we can complete some of those capital projects that we've talked about in, in our meetings. The unallocated fund balance for this year will be at the, for the next fiscal year will be at the full percent cap, which is the maximum cap by statute. Did exceed that cap during COVID, first year of COVID. But I think that we were comfortable with that because it was really just a strange year and we didn't know what to expect. But now we're, we're back within the, the caps set in statute. We talked about the school lunch fund profit and loss statements. We are in the black for the January and February months. And, um, I think we're in the black by over a hundred thousand, which is a real improvement over last year where we were in the year before. There continues to be some uncertainty over whether we will continue to have the free lunch program for next year. It's dependent on federal government approving it as part of the federal budget, which we're hopeful will be approved. Governor Hope did include, um, basically a placeholder for that in, in state project. So fingers crossed that, that funding comes through. Um, we also discussed a number of pilots, two of which are on the horizon, one of which is on the agenda for this evening to be approved by the board. And one thing we, we started a conversation on, but we'll continue it at our June ninth meeting, was on spending in the athletic programs. So we'll continue that discussion at our next meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, RG.
Thank you.
Okay, curriculum committee chair, Tim?
Uh, I was not president at the last meeting and Trish was our chair. And so I'll ask her to make that report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trish. Good night, Ray. Uh, we met on March twenty-second. Um, we talked about a new program, possibility of the high school and the middle school, the seal of civic readiness. And Rick Shay presented that for us. We imply it approved, it could start as early as next school year. And it's kind of a fun opportunity for middle school and high school to add another element, another opportunity. Been pretty exciting. We felt we could do it with existing staffing and funding. So, did I cover that appropriately?
Perfect.
Okay. Uh, we talked about the addition of the business teacher, which Frank already discussed during the budget. We went over some requests for new courses. I guess they were all at the high school and the level of interest so far. A couple of them have over twenty kids interested. Of course, we'll see how scheduling works out. That's always a challenge in the high school.
I do have an update on that. AP Spanish.
Oh, right.
Um, we are actually shipping that out via, um, our distance learning. So that's actually a good thing because say we have seven to ten students that are taking that AP Spanish. We then ship that out to maybe a few other people. And then we actually get reimbursement back on that staff member as well. Sixty percent back on the period that they teach for distance learning. So it actually can make revenue as well. So it's a positive thing. Gives more opportunities for our kids and gives more opportunities to other people's kids. And it gives us revenue at the same time. So that's kind of a win-win.
I am. So, sorry. How would that work? We would have a teacher here on site and then we would.
Yep. We broadcast it out using our distance learning. And so we're actually doing three courses next year. Out for this is, this year we only do one. So we push that out. Our teacher teaches in front of our kids. We open up slots to other students that are in front of us and we teach through the DL and then it's reimbursed all through the season.
Now, after two years of trying the COVID, for a year.
Right. I mean, it's something that schools can do now.
Ironic.
But it maximizes our technology and maximizes the ability for us to offer more.
Uh, and we discussed the world language program, which was kind of out of the community survey and what folks wanted to see more in our district. And a lot of us remember we used to have French and Spanish. And then the cuts we ended up with just Spanish. So we were just trying to have a discussion about maybe some creative ways to have other offerings or pathways. And it's kind of just a brainstorming. And I think we left it where administration is gonna try to get creative and come back maybe with some ideas in December and January.
Are there other distance learning opportunities for boys?
So there are. Um, and we have a lot of kids take distance learning, but if you're talking about pathways, there was a long conversation about it because you can't always guarantee a pathway unless you work out different agreements. So there's a little bit more work that has to be done on our end to guarantee if we were to use distance learning. But there's some other opportunities that we're also exploring as well.
Yeah, DL seems to be okay for like exploring something. Like, but if, like, say you want to take a telling one, you might not be able to take a telling two. We might not be select the school to receive the telling two. It's quite limited. But excitingly, if you just want to try one off here and there, might take away. Uh, and lastly, we talked about the New York State assessments, kind of just stating that we are having them again. And they were gonna count again, uh, for accountability on the three through eight. And the regions are back and not optional. And, um, a lot of kids have not taken regents. Like, if you are a freshman, you got out of two years of regents. So you're a junior now and you've got a lot of regents that really count. So we talked a lot about how to support the staff, the students. So. Yes, that's it. I know the, the state assessments, three through eight already happened or some of them happened.
Yep, the, the LA happened.
The LA, yeah, all right. Anything, Rachel, you were at the meeting.
Yeah, I was.
That I missed.
I feel like you covered it pretty well. It was like, I don't know, I'm gonna say a seven hour meeting, but maybe it's just an hour.
We talked a lot.
I think it was like an hour and a half. Yeah.
And there are nice notes attached to, to board docs if anyone wants.
And isn't it filmed?
And it's filmed.
Anyone's interested for a little.
You chopping vegetables.
Video tonight after this meeting.
Thanks for filling in. There was one more page.
What?
There's one more page. Oh, yes, there's more.
The discussion on the art, the article.
The article and just general.
Yeah, we had, we tried to have a general discussion about grading and what is a grade. Got into a lot of philosophy.
Yeah.
And how complicated it is and what is the goal. But it's good, important discussion to, to always have on the forefront.
I think it's always happening in, in teachers' lounges across the district and the country.
Right.
Good to think so.
Hey, thank you. Facilities chair, Rob?
Yeah. Uh, all right. There's a whole bunch here. I'm gonna try to rattle them off. Uh, baseball softball field, six loads wind field. It's a real big portion for the spread. We're with Sims Fire trying to get the amount of taxes. Well, lacrosse, we have four lacrosse teams, uh, both girls. Bill, that's currently lacrosse stadium. For the paint, uh, because there's multiple colors. Tennis courts, we received lower bids, uh, for the repairs for the area of the campus. Field conditions, tests have come back and the fields are in good shape to do this. We have an open range of seating options for grass. There's some staffing issues with maintenance. We have a plan in place. So, I mean, it's probably Friday in March. That already happened.
It's a little short.
I think it's, is it even, this is not now.
Now, it's, it's gotta be.
Yeah, it's, all right, thank you. I'll go. I'll go real close.
No, slow it down.
All right. Building maintenance. We're still having supply chain issues. Preventive maintenance agreements are being completed for the items. Uh, there's been overlook for the director. Um, dye, dye tracing will be conducted to the roof leaks to force repair. Hundred thousand dollar project. We've released an RFP and started bidding process for the owner's construction. Use of facilities, we had a bunch of discussions about that. So we were starting out. And, uh, we talked about, you know, what we, things changing. Stats and EPC and RFP for that. Uh, we'd like to potentially do the EPC. We've talked about that a couple of times here, but the, you know, main goal. If we were to put the capital reserves toward EPC work without having EPC, that takes away our reserves and we'll need to, you know, buy taxpayers. By utilizing EPC, we can get the cost saves for future as well as exercise. It's kind of overhashing again, which we already talked about.
Elementary school, we met on that today, by the way, with our architect. And it's how, um, some, one school district just went out for, uh, EPC. It was two point two million dollars. Wow. Of, of funding that they received to be able to have that worked on, on top of the capital project that they're doing as well.
So, uh, update on the elementary school transportation project. We've talked about it a few times here. Again, this is in the past now, but on three twenty-one, I'm just with Mr. Venzio. Project architect, we're gonna meet with the elementary school staff to get some other thoughts and suggestions for the space. You know, they're gonna compile that important with administrators, get an idea of what costs are potentially be. And the, uh, they're gonna survey the drainage for the middle school, high school locations, starting from our seventeen. So all that, I suppose, has already happened. Good so far?
Okay.
Great. Uh, contract review, uh, for soccer club. You know, we added that prices are contingent. Based on board policy, the subject to change if policy changes. Uh, we moved to a one year instead of five, just to make sure that, you know, see what happens with the use over time, et cetera. Kids club, there have been some changes, so these price changes, room use, timeframe to the program, discrimination clause, termination agreement and COVID nineteen. Uh, our attorneys have reviewed it. What was contract? Go. Technology, our K through twelve staff has requested more tech integration, teaching classrooms. Added the SA MR model, uh, supported the technology plan and. Now I'm out of breath and I think that's mostly.
No.
Which had also a seven hour meeting.
Well, we did get the stuff about HEPA again.
Oh, we did. I didn't see it in the, I see I'm cheating. I'm falling off the beds.
Well, just that Frank was asking.
Yeah.
We had an opportunity to request.
Oh, I forgot what I asked for him and I was like, what did I ask?
So we always like to have a little ventilation filtration.
The county is, um, as you know, I've asked for about this a couple of times. The county is asking that we possibly could utilize HEPA units in schools based off the money that they receive. They're compiling, um, how much they got from school districts, what sizes they need. And then now it's going through the, the levels that they have to go through at the county to see then if we can get units. And then they'll let us know how many units each school district was going to be allocated based off of all that. Probably got to know a few months before we even get to that point, but at least it's moving forward.
I mean, you know, those are good to have long-term.
As long as there are ones that are easy and less cost-effective to be able to keep replacing. Because there's some that, more cost-effective. Thank you, Rachel, for fixing my poor English today. I appreciate it. But there are some that the replacement of the filters are pretty expensive. And then can, you know, depending on how many you have, can cost maybe, Jim, what was, what was the rule of thumb? Four thousand, five thousand?
Yeah.
And that is every couple of months to replace those.
Are these installed or are they?
They're porters.
Or, yeah, so you can move them around as needed.
As needed.
And we.
I was gonna say, you could focus on running on more during, you know, the closed window.
Winter.
Yeah.
Some science fair. It's right there.
I think generally those, like, these ones I use, I'll call for three months, filter stops, right? But if you're, if you're running on, you know, eight to four or eight to five as opposed to going through my seven, you probably have to get more on jet.
So, and I do believe the county's taking that into consideration. Good.
That's awesome stuff too. So that is it. Sorry for talking fast, but if I don't, we'll be here until like eight thirty.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, policy chair, Rachel?
Um, policy, we had a meeting that was very well set up by Frank and Jesse, who they were unable to be there. But three board members, Rob, RG, myself, were able to go through our agenda. And, um, we have some exciting things coming up on Wednesday at three o'clock. If anyone wants to catch that video when it goes up, it's gonna be a fun one. So we went through some policies that haven't been touched since, I can't beat the, uh, the shared decision-making nineteen nine. But it seems like most of the policies, if you've been looking at policies, started April seventh, two thousand and three. So we looked at policies that hadn't been seemingly touched since then. Policy two thousand, which is board operational goals, we looked at that. No need to make any changes. It's, it's been doing well for some nineteen years. Policy twenty-one ten though, we looked at, and we looked at the NISBA recommendations and we were making some changes to that, just minor revisions, taking out a paragraph that just doesn't need to be there at all. And we're gonna, that's on the agenda to look, the board can decide whether or not they agree with that. We have a couple of policies that we pushed off to this meeting. We looked over and we wanted to talk to Frank. So hope you'll be on that. And a couple of other policies that kind of we looked at and this meeting with its shared decision-making. decision-making made sense. 2260, I think, is Citizens Advisory Committee, and 2265. And just coincidentally, if anyone's really curious, about two hours after I sent an email to Frank and Jess about the board meeting that we have this Wednesday, NISBA sent out their revisions, and one of them was on our list to discuss, and if you know how many policies there are, the chances of that are, that's it. So we're actually super current in some small ways, so that was awesome. And that was our meeting, just lovely, also recorded somewhere on.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thanks to Archie and Rob, because technically that was a miracle.
Okay. Moving on to new business, I'm gonna take 7.1, approval of 2022, 2023 school district budget, as a separate item, may I motion to move that?
I'll move that.
Second?
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Thank you. Okay. So let's take 7.2 through 7.8, that's approval of property tax report card, Board of Education policy 2110 that Rachel just brought to our attention, acceptance of donations to dugouts, very generous donation of time by Mr. Ensign, and budget amendment to accept that, the approved pilot agreement we spoke about in board committee, award bids for capital project. Any questions or comments on any of those items? Okay, and may I have a motion for 7.2 through 7.8?
Please.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Also, a few private donations there listed?
Yeah.
Thank you to those people.
Yes.
In 7.5, yes.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Pointing that out, yes, we have some, always generous donations, very much appreciated. Okay, so, opportunity for the board to be heard. Does anyone have any? Okay, then dates to remember. Board petitions due Monday, April 18, BOSI's budget meeting, April 27, is that at 7:30 a.m.? You know?
Yes.
7:30 a.m., and we need like a forum for that? So, um-
What is that?
Wednesday, April 27, I assume it's virtual?
Yes, is that BOSI's budget meeting at 7:30, right?
In virtual, right? Is anybody available for that?
I'm, I think I'm ready.
I can do it.
Okay, Tricia, okay, let's-
And also if we have any staffing, I can send maybe you need to go on there, we would put them on, if they do, just, we have a couple of them.
Okay.
Yeah, I can do it.
Okay, so, we'll send a reminder, and then meet the candidates will be Monday, May 2nd in the pack. Next regular board meeting, Monday, May 9, no audit, at this point, no executive session,